So if I could call the meeting to order, please. And if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands. So before we accept, as Jen could get a motion to modify tonight's agenda to add as item seven, as business of the board, a resolution to approve a forthcoming letter from the board, which we will discuss at section seven.
So moved.
Second.
Can I, hold on, on my agenda right now, 7.1 is the policies.
We're just bumping everything down, Maria, to add a new 7.0.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
With that addendum, can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So I think now, now we move to, I think, for me, my favorite part of tonight's meeting, which is we get to recognize our departing board member, Maria Kashkyn, and thank her for her dedication to the board and the district. And I think we have a few special guests who would like to say a few words about Maria and the work that she's done.
That's great. So we're in the process of promoting some of our community members. And I think first in should be Mr. Whitney.
There we are. Hello there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Phil.
Excellent. Hello, Board. Thank you for taking this time to recognize Maria. It's my pleasure to be here. Before, I should stick with the rules. My name is Phil Whitney. I live in Riverview Road in Irvington, New York. Before I recognize our esteemed board member, I'd like to first thank Juliette and the entire high school, and indeed, the district administration for throwing an amazing event on Saturday. I know there's still another one to come, but Saturday's parade was outstanding. The Whitney family had an incredible time with many tears of joy as we saw Clementine's parents up on Broadway and along the high school hill. It was an amazing event. Thank you again. But our real, my purpose here tonight is just to say a few words to Maria. Maria, I don't even know where to begin because we were joined at the hip for a period of time in which literally I talked to you every day. But I do think I have to start at the very beginning, which is when you decided to join the school board. And you may remember that you did not join willingly. You did not decide to run willingly. I had to persuade you, and you were not necessarily on the fence, but you were definitely needing to be persuaded. I remember saying, "The community needs you." And I feel vindicated by that. The other funny thing about your first days on the board or running for the board is that you were not on Facebook. And I remember putting you on Facebook, literally sitting at my computer and putting your name in with your email and your password. So if you ever have any problems with Facebook, you know who to call. But that was one of the funny things about Maria is that she was not on social media before she ran for the school board. So I guess that's a good reason to, for Maria to thank the Irvington School District because that got her on Facebook. Or maybe that's a reason for her to say no thanks to the school district, given everything that happens on Facebook these days. As my vice president, Maria demonstrated an ability to get things done. And in fact, that was always Maria's hallmark, is that Maria has gotten things done in the school district and in this community. She has that reputation deservedly. I could not have been an effective president without Maria at my side. As I said, we talked probably two or three times a day, every day for that time. But the funny thing is, I realized, as I thought about this, that Maria has been a vice president to three different board members, which probably makes you the most influential board member in board history without ever having been president. And I think that also speaks to Maria's quality, that she knows how to be a team player, knows how to be a wingman, and also to speak up and make her voice heard. Because when we worked together, Maria's voice was a very dominant voice. She was not the classic vice president in the background. And I'm sure that Michael and Brian would echo that. Maria has been a tireless advocate for board governance. She's always been the voice of logic, reason, and the community. And those things do not always go together, let me say. But in fact, Maria was a strong voice for all three of those things. And finally, Maria has been a tireless voice for student learning, a champion of student learning. And I think that shows through in everything that Maria did in her six years on the school board, and even in the, in the year in which you were not a school board member, you were still very influential in your sabbatical. So I want to wish you well. You deserve this retirement. I hope that you will stay active in the school district, and I know you will stay active in the community. I've missed working with you on the school board, hearing the consent agenda, almost made me want to run again, but no, not really. Congratulations. We will miss you. Chris will miss you. The board will miss you, and the school district will miss you. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Phil, it was great to see you again as well.
Thank, thank you, Phil, for those words. I think we have a couple other peoples, Dr. Harrison, who's next to be promoted.
Yes, Tanya Hunt. So Tanya, if you would like to join us to say a few words?
Of course. I could not pass up the opportunity to honor my friend Maria. She has not only been an extraordinary Board of Education member, but a consistent and dedicated volunteer in the Irvington community at large for more than 15 years. It could be closer to 20. I remember meeting her at Dowslane in 2005. And trust me, even at that point, you know, she had young children, and she was already making her mark as a class mom, and I'm sure in many other ways, too. And here we are. We've worked together all these years and become friends. And now, you know, both of our youngest children have graduated from high school, which is pretty unbelievable. She, her broad volunteer leadership credentials and experiences include, of course, her time on the board, but also as a PTSA president and executive committee member. And of course, because, you know, she needed more to do, she has been a member of her Field Point Community Board and a member of the IS Cab Board, and, you know, the list goes on. But it's not, it's not the fact that she's held all these leadership positions that is most impressive about Maria. It's the quality of her leadership and personal characteristics. In all that time, those many years that I've worked with her, what stands out most to me is that she always has a laser focus on, first, making sure she thoroughly understands whatever the situation is and the people involved, which, you know, a lot of people don't take the time to do. So that stands out about Maria. And then after she understands the situation and the people, she, she comes up with a plan that helps the whole organization come up with the best outcome. And, you know, as Phil mentioned, because she has this approach, the job gets done. And the, you know, the examples are endless, on every board, for every community event, on every school field trip, including, you know, God bless her, the, the one in eighth grade where all those poor kids got sick. She brings her considerable talents to bear, and even more importantly, values everyone around her for who they are. And, you know, she makes a point of surrounding herself with people who she then works to put in a position to contribute their best strengths also. She leads, works with, and supports others to reach whatever that objective may be through hard work, perseverance, and listen, just plain confidence, Maria knows how to do stuff. All of this happens while never forgetting whatever the goal is, whether it's creating the best possible environment for children in our schools and community, making her neighborhood board function more official, officially, or just plain building Irvington Village Community spirit. Without question, we in the Irvington community all benefit because Maria is here and involved. And I personally am incredibly grateful and proud to know her as both a friend and a volunteer leader. Saying thank you to you, Maria, is not enough. You have given countless hours, but nevertheless, I say thank you and congratulations.
Thank you very, very much, Tanya. And what wasn't stated is that you also speak through the lens of having been a trustee yourself. So there's a great deal of understanding for the good work that she's done. So thank you, Tanya.
Absolutely.
So we would like to invite a third guest to join us at this time, one Robert Gredos, I believe. Bob is there?
Hold on.
Yeah. Great, we can hear you, Bob. No video, but we can hear you. Not anymore.
How's that now?
Very good.
Thanks. I couldn't pass up the opportunity to say a few words to congratulate Maria for all of her time on the board. I'm just seeing if my video would start up. I'm gonna have to ask Mr. Hannah why my computer doesn't work properly. But, but I do want to say just, just a couple things. One is, the district was very lucky at one point to have two graduates of the University of Michigan from 1991 on the board at the same time. So that, that's a banner statistic that should be considered in the annals of Irvington history. And then, you know, secondly, one of the things that I've always preached, and everybody on the board now has heard it from me, that, you know, the role on the board is not to do what benefits you, not to do what benefits your children, but do what benefits the district. And that every decision that a board member makes has to be what's in the best interest of the school district. And we, from time to time, have disagreements on what that is, but as long as people operate from that point of view, we typically get to the right answer, and I will tell you. And then the community should know that in all the years that I've worked with Maria, both in the times that she's been on the board, off the board, on the face committee, what have you, I have never seen one instance where Maria made a decision that she did not deem was in the best interest of this school district and in the Village of Irvington. And so for that, I think we all owe Maria a great debt of gratitude, and I want to congratulate her on her retirement. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you so much, Bob, for sharing your experiences, and congratulations to Maria. At this time, Mr. Friedman, if other trustees would like to say something, and then I will close with some remarks on behalf of the district.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll, I'll let my fellow trustees say anything if they'd like at this point, and then I will have some comments of my own.
Are you going to recognize someone?
Well, I guess I was gonna go down our, sorry, our normal order some more. You'd be up next.
Thank you. So Maria, while I haven't known you as long as some of, some of these folks here, I have to say that, for me, you epitomize the executive team. I've, I've only known boards on which you've served as on executive team. But, but truly, I will, we will be the less for your institutional memory not being with us. And I hope that we can sometimes call you and pick your brain if some question comes up. So thank you for everything.
Brian?
Michael?
Brian?
Yes.
Johnny seems to think he has to hand me something?
Yes, so I'll take over then. Johnny does need to hand you something. Johnny, please hand her something.
Okay.
He's gotta be in the frame.
So Maria, I'll let my fellow board members speak after this, but on behalf of the entire board, we want to thank you for your service, your dedication, for making us a better board in all of your hard work. So there's just a little token of our appreciation from the board there for you that I think you and Johnny will be able to enjoy.
Am I supposed to open it now? I'll do it later.
You could, you could open your gift later, but I'll now let any of my fellow board members who'd like to say anything at this point. Michael?
Yeah. So going down the row, I have the honor of being next. And Maria, I, I know this is just a temporary moment, because I'll see you tomorrow, the next day, and the next, but this is such a special opportunity to recognize you and all you've done for our community. Like a lot of folks, I moved here from the city and took a while to figure out what was what. And one of those things is that you don't vote for a trustee in the city. So one of the first posters for a candidate I ever saw, and boy, they were around the community, was of your wonderful face running for school board. And you were, there's Johnny. Hello, Johnny. And, and you were, you were probably my first, the first person I ever voted for as a school trustee. So that was, Johnny wants in. So, so that was very cool to, to, to learn about the schools and know that you were sort of the face of the schools for someone new to the community. And then I got involved, and it was on the PTSA, and eventually decided to run. And I got the honor of taking the Maria Kashkyn seat, because you, after your first term, took, took a break. And so I got to ride in on your coattails, and that was a very special honor. And then you came back, and that was even better. And as, as Phil was sharing, we were an executive team together, and no one is a better partner than you are, Maria. You are someone with, who's, you can trust absolutely, who's 100% honest, puts it all out there, the classic person whose heart is on their sleeve, and someone who was doing this for the right reasons for the kids. There's no one who, who dug in harder for students in Irvington than you. And I think that is something for all of us to remember and to model in our work as trustees. And you have a very special skill, which I still haven't figured out to this day, which is that we could be talking, as we talked many hours and many days, I'm sorry, Johnny, and it could be a conversation at nine or 10 at night about some issue and trying to figure out which way it was going and what people thought about it. And I talked to you again at 7:15 in the morning before our next meeting, and you'd already somehow heard from 10 people. And I still don't know how you do that, but you are so amazingly connected to the folks in this community, and you always know what's what. So I continue to be impressed with that. What are some other? I think, I think Johnny thinks he's getting you back. I think he's a little nervous right now. That's why he's jumping in a little bit, because you are involved in everything. You are the fabric of this community. And so while I will miss seeing you here at these meetings, I know I'll see you everywhere else, and I know I'll see you back here at these meetings, too, because you care. And this isn't just a thing that comes with a title and a term. You, you are involved in every aspect of this community because you're, you have unlimited energy, unlimited heart. And, and so we in Irvington are very lucky to have you be such an important part of it. And I could go on, but I'll stop. I'm gonna miss you in this role, but I know we'll see you all over the place. And I look forward to having conversations about what we could do better and what we're doing great, and getting reminded of something that I forgot, but you'll never forget because you remember everything. So talk to you soon.
Thank you, Michael. Dave?
So I'm not going to miss you, not one bit. And you know why? Because through this experience, aside from all the nice things I'm about to say, is we've become terrific friends, and I will see you, so I won't miss you. I'm excited to change the pace of our conversations, for sure. But now on to you and your, I mean, I couldn't come up with enough adjectives, really. I mean, Michael said it, Morris said it. What I'll add is, is that I will desperately miss quote, unquote, our conversations. Rich, delightful, learned, you know, you're an excellent partner in just about every aspect of this work. You know, your connection to this community is, you know, it's, like Michael just pointed out, it's incredible. You know, you, you, you are, you are the heartbeat of Irvington, as far as I'm concerned. So while we lose a very, very valuable resource, I know that Johnny gains back a very, very wonderful wife and mother, and just all-around champion of a woman. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dave. Beth?
She looks frozen.
I know Beth was having some technical problems. She just texted me. So I will skip over Beth. Erin, if you'd like to add any comments, we can always go back to Beth once those are resolved.
I just want to thank you, Maria, for all your phone calls and words of encouragement and help in trying to bring me up to speed in a very complicated process that requires much more than one year, but you've taken a lot of time to chat with me and share all your knowledge, which just seems abundant. And I'm sorry that I haven't had a chance to work with you longer. We'll miss you.
Thank you, Erin. Beth, are you back?
No, it doesn't appear she, she is.
She's back, but she's muted.
Can you see me now?
Yes.
You can hear me now, yes.
And she froze again.
So it seems as though Beth is...
Amazing.
There we go.
Okay. I am so sorry, Maria, because this is not coming through well. I think my audio and my video is having problems, but these have been an amazing two years working with you and learning from and with you on so many topics of importance to the district and the community. And I look forward to continuing our relationship, even in what everyone's terming your retirement. But we know you're not going to retire from your good work on behalf of the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Beth. So Maria, I think all the trustees have shared their sentiments, and I share them as well in terms of how much we've enjoyed working with you, how much easier you've made my job this year, and for that, I am forever appreciative. But I'll just say, I'll miss you, but I know I'll still be talking to you. I certainly feel like I've gained a friend through this process, but now I'm encouraged it to be more about our kids and food and less about the work of the board, which I'm sure you'll enjoy, I know Johnny will enjoy. So with that, really a heartfelt thanks from all of us, and we'll miss you.
Great. So Maria, I get the opportunity to say a few words on behalf of the district before. We'll give you the floor to certainly respond and to reflect upon your service to the Irvington schools. I've had the good pleasure, the great fortune of working with you in partnership for 75% of my career here in Irvington. Six of my eight years, we had the good times of working together. And I can say, much like what other trustees and our former trustees indicated, you've done it all. I think you've sat on every single committee, possibly the exception of communications. You've participated in negotiations, whatever ad hoc effort surfaced, you're there to be a leader and to contribute consistently, a strong thought partner, always an advocate for the district, always an advocate for all of our students, and very principle-based, always wanting to make the right decision on behalf of our students and for that of the community of Irvington. So we thank you. I personally thank you. As everyone has said, you will be missed on the board, but the board and the district is better today for all of your hard work and all the time that you have contributed to our schools. And we know that we'll be forever stronger because of you, your dedication, and your commitment. On behalf of the West Putt School Boards Association, I would like to read a recognition that they have provided for you, that they'd like to recognize Maria Kashkyn for her dedication and service. And you and all other retiring trustees, whose dedicated volunteer efforts have helped to shape the direction of the school district and enhance the quality of education for all students. You have been able to cheer on graduates while working to improve the education of many children still under your care. Your commitment to providing leadership and accountability has been instrumental in the effort to meet the needs of your community and prepare students for the future. And then thank you for your service. Congratulations on behalf of the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association. And then on behalf of the Irvington School District, we are pleased to have ordered a brick that will go in the patio in the campus quad, that will forever honor your service to the Irvington schools and your work as a trustee. And it will note both of the terms that you have served from 2012 to 2015, and then, of course, 2007 to 2020. We're gonna buy a larger brick than some of the others, Maria, because we're gonna save space for you to come back in a couple years' time, when you are missing all the good work on the Board of Education. But personally, and on behalf of the school district, thank you for being you. Thank you for all that you've done. And again, we know that you're always gonna be out there as an advocate and as a thought partner for us in the school district.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. Maria, the floor is yours if you'd like to say anything.
Well, I think first I have to quote my dear friend, Mr. Bob Gredos, who believes that all of my good decisions were made because of him. So I want to give him that shout out. Just kidding, Bob. Thank you. You guys are, I'm very overwhelmed right now. You know, sandbagging me with Phil, Bob, and Tanya. I mean, I had to compose myself there for a minute there. Most of you might not know, but I do get emotional sometimes. And good that you left a little space there, Chris, on the brick, because my husband does joke a little bit recently that we might adopt another child so I can run for the school board again. But I have to say, I'm kind of looking forward to being an empty nester now that my youngest is graduating. Oh, graduated, correct, actually, because graduation has happened. It has been truly an honor to serve on the school board all of these years. To my fellow board members, you... you guys have been amazing the last three years. And I thank you for all of your dedication and your work that you've done for this school, and will continue as I nicely walk off the board, and Ms. Jane joins you guys. I really am, I am speechless, and I am very overwhelmed by all of these kind words that you guys have said about me. I love Irvington. I love this community. I raised my children here for a reason, and there was a reason why I was never president, because I've always known it was never in my wheelhouse. And this school, this community, is very, very special to me, and I thank you, and it's been truly an honor. Chris, Mary, and Carol, you guys are an amazing team, and I'm not going anywhere. I'm going to be watching. I'm going to be listening. I'll be calling you, Chris, from the steps, as I see the construction going on, like I did for the football field. Me and my four-legged fur babies will be keeping an eye on all the construction projects. And I look forward to the next steps, my retirement, but still very much being involved. And I will be watching. And don't kid yourself, I have all of your cells, and you will be getting texts from me. So, thank you. And I'm still around, so don't forget me.
I don't think you have to worry about that, Maria, but yes.
Here's to you, Maria.
So with that, I think we now move on to what would be ordinarily the time for comments from the community. And as we've been doing during our now remote meetings, if the community has any questions or comments, they're invited to submit them to the board at the board's email address, board@irvingtonschools.org, and we will respond to those questions or comments accordingly. So now, I think we move on to what's now Item 7.0, which is a resolution of the board. So I'll read the resolution.
I've tweaked it a bit, if you'll let me read it to the record and Pauline. I'll give you a hard copy of it in the morning. So, "Whereas the Irvington Board of Education condemns racial injustice and inequity and believes that any such injustices must be remediated to secure a more equal society. Whereas the Irvington Board of Education is committed to ensuring that its schools are anti-racist and that all people and organizations must address implicit biases in everyday actions. Whereas the Irvington Union Free School District maintains its dedication to its core values to provide a safe, welcoming, and nurturing educational environment for all students and to inspire lifelong learning in our children. Whereas the Irvington Board of Education values the K-12 programming that teaches tolerance, understanding, and the acceptance of differences in a variety of contexts. Whereas the Irvington Board of Education is committed to expanding the commitment to anti-racist education, eliminating social injustices and implicit bias, and increasing instructional diversity. Therefore, be it resolved, the Irvington Board of Education approves the dissemination of the attached letter, which will be read into record as well, stating its beliefs herein." And please advise Brian if you want me to read the letter as well?
Yeah, I will read the letter. I'm just trying to pull it up, so just give me one second. Okay, so I'll read the letter at this point. Dear Irvington community, the Irvington Board of Education condemns racial injustice and inequality. We believe that these injustices must be remedied to secure a more equal society. We must ensure that our schools are anti-racist and that we are all addressing implicit biases in our everyday actions. The core values of the Irvington School District are to provide a safe, welcoming, and nurturing educational environment for all students and to inspire lifelong learning in our children. Over the years, the district has provided K-12 programming that teaches tolerance, understanding, and the acceptance of differences in a variety of contexts. We can and must do more. The district is currently strengthening its social-emotional learning, Prens SEL, by using recommendations developed this year with a leader in the SEL field, Collaborative for Academic and Social Emotional Learning, otherwise known as CASL. IUFSD is also in the process of developing a partnership with the Metropolitan Center for Research on Equity and the Transformation of Schools, in order to complete an assessment of current district practices and programs, and ultimately improve our work around diversity and anti-racism education. Your elected school board is committed to working with the administration to examine everything from equity in instruction to the discipline process. We look forward to the, to all community stakeholders bringing their passion and dedication to this difficult but necessary work. We stand together to fight inequity and injustice, and want to especially thank our current students and alumni for their efforts in channeling their rightful outrage and pain into positive steps toward change. Sincerely, the entire board."
That said, you would need a motion.
Yeah, so if I can get a motion to approve tonight's resolution.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So with that, now we move on to the next item, which is the adoption of several policies. Dr. Harrison, I don't know if there's anything you want to say about these before we proceed.
Similar to my comments approximately one month ago, these are all policy updates, with the exception of 4321.12, which is a new policy. The first policies and its exhibits are related, are updates to existing policies to ensure compliance with New York State's Education Law 2D that pertains to student data privacy and security. The other policy that I referenced, 432112, is the use of timeout rooms and physical restraints to ensure that we have policy governing any such practices in the school district. These policies have gone through our policy committee, which is represented by the Board of Education and district personnel. The committee made its recommendations to the Board of Education approximately one month ago, or two more board meetings back. The board had the opportunity to consider these policies. They were posted for public, and tonight is the second reading, or otherwise, the adoption of said policies.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. So with that, unless there are any questions, can we get a motion to adopt the policies reflected in tonight's agenda?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Apologies, I just lost the agenda. My, so Dr. Harrison, what's next on our agenda, please?
The next would be consent agenda number one, which is inclusive of personnel, I'm sorry, everything but personnel items. So we'll be looking at items that pertain to curriculum instruction, business of the board, and business office matters.
Thank you. Are there any questions on just this portion of tonight's consent agenda? Hearing done. Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda number one, please?
So moved? So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So our next consent agenda relates to personnel items. Are there any questions on this portion of tonight's consent agenda?
Yes, Brian, if I may add a comment?
You may.
Thank you. So it's a bit unusual, but I just wanted to share that in this context, I would be voting no on the consent agenda related to personnel items, and I wanted to share why and to clarify. The first reason is related to the district's poor record when it comes to hiring faculty of color, and the second relates to the district's approach to supporting our student writers in the middle school and high school. I want to make sure to make clear that my vote is not related to any individual who the district is hiring or approving tonight. Along with the administration and school board, I welcome new faculty. I thank our teachers, administrators, and staff for being part of our learning community. I have no doubt that as new teachers, you'll be exemplary, well-prepared, will be game changers in helping our district with their continuous improvement in serving students. Nor is the vote a personal critique of our administrators. After all, our interim superintendent for instruction only began in this role a few months ago. In fact, in making my comments, I want to acknowledge my leadership role in past years as part of the executive team and as a board president. So my comments reflect that I've been in a role where I was part of these discussions. So while it's rare to see a no vote, I'm voting no for concerns around systems and processes. In terms of lack of diversity in our faculty and administration in Irvington, it's an issue that's not unique to Irvington, but it's one that we have to own and address. And more than half a century after our pivotal 1960s civil rights movement, and with approximately 200 members of our faculty and additionally administrators, I believe that there should be more faculty and administrators who are Black, Indigenous, or people of color, whether that's 15, or 30, or 40, who knows, but we don't have anywhere close to a representative body of faculty from these underrepresented groups. As I mentioned before, I was a board president. I have many times referenced what I thought was a thoughtful and detailed hiring process. I think anybody who's gone through it recognizes that there are many steps, and that it's been carefully crafted to come to know and see the work of candidates. And I've, you know, been one in these meetings to point to that. But at the same time, I think we all have recognized for a period of time that more needed to be done, and there have been efforts to recruit candidates who are Black, or Indigenous, or people of color. The board supported the superintendent's initiative and efforts in concert with our neighboring districts, in organizing a special annual jobs fair to recruit from a broader base of candidates. However, after several years with this effort, the district is not doing any better regarding our hiring, you know, outcomes. We seem to need to rethink our approach. And I appreciate that our superintendent, administrators, and our board is committed to that work. It is certainly corollary to the resolution that we just approved. But I think, as a five-year member of the board, with one year left, that it needs to be said explicitly that we need to work to change what has been a long time needing to be changed, and we can only take responsibility for it now, and we need to do so. Very separate, but there are some related aspects to it. I want to pivot to my second reason for voting no on the personnel items. I'm concerned about the district's approach as it relates to further strengthening ELA in our middle school and high school. In the early days of the ninth-grade writing program and in my time on the BOE, I supported its implementation, because I, of course, support the administration's professional expertise in these efforts. I wanted to give the program time to develop, as all programs need, and then look to the insights about how it was working. However, half a decade later, we, I believe, are going into a third incarnation of what this program could be, which I think is a sign of the challenges that it's had to be an effective tool. And I'm concerned that that focus on reimagining it is too narrowly focused in terms of use of resources and time. And so I wish that, in fact, we were taking a step back and looking more broadly at it in terms of a K-12 continuum to identify the best solutions, particularly in this challenging period that we've been discussing for several months, in which we face large deficits due to the pandemic over the next few years. We need to look carefully, more so than ever. So we, as the board, the administration aspire to get it right. I'm saying in these two areas, we need to go back to the drawing board and look at what processes and resources do we truly need to be successful. I know that you feel similarly about our efforts to do better in these areas, and I certainly recognize that you each have experience, insights to add, and I look forward to your comments. I know this isn't the time for the, perhaps, the extended and in-depth discussion, so I hope that we will have that opportunity going forward. So that is the end of my comments.
Thank you, Michael, for sharing your personal opinion on these matters. As Dr. Harrison said in his letter, and as the board's forthcoming letter will say, the district is engaged in diversity and inclusion work and effort, and we all recognize the importance and necessity of that work. And as you started to allude to, that work requires extended and thoughtful discussion, and tonight's not the time for that discussion. But as a board, as an entire board, we should work together to schedule that conversation, whether it's over the summer or in the fall, at a time also where the community will have notice of it and be able to, hopefully, will be a conversation in person, and can be there for that. Your statement has numerous inaccuracies, and I don't think it fully inaccurate represents the work that the district has done and that it is committed to doing. You know, I'll just touch on one example, because as I was listening, you know, as you know, we've had several discussions about writing instruction, and we've talked about the desire to look at that on a elementary-through-high-school continuum. So, you know, to say it's narrowly focused on the ninth-grade program, I think is not a full representation of the work that the board's been discussing and that the administration is working towards. You know, and while that work may not have proceeded as quickly as we would have liked, it is something that is a focus and is of importance. So, but as I said, I'm not going to engage in a point-by-point discussion. I don't think that's productive at this time. But, you know, so at this time, I really just want to welcome these new hires that we're about to approve to the district. You know, we're excited that you'll all bring your talents to Irvington, and we look forward to your contributions to the district. So unless there are any other questions or comments on the consent agenda?
I'll add one thing, Brian, to your point there. You know, I just, I want to, you know, while everything that Michael said is, you know, Michael's thinking and opinion, I just want to, you know, recall that our district's hiring practices can always be improved. But, you know, in this forum, almost a little less than a year ago, we sat here praising those practices. So I just want to, you know, make mention that of that, and make sure that this is not something that is colored by current events only, but colored by really improving district hiring practices. That's all I want to add.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Or at this point, can we move to approve this portion? Or at this point, can we move to approve this portion of the consent agenda?
I think we could move on. Is your computer working again? Are you good?
I'm good.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so can I get a motion to approve the second consent agenda of the evening?
So moved?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, Brian?
Oh, sorry, those opposed.
Nope.
So with that, that concludes our business for the evening. This, again, we would have another opportunity for community comment, but, you know, as I said before, if the community does have comments, please send that via email. At this point, our next meeting will be July 7th at 6:30 for our annual reorganization meeting. At this point, can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the employment history of particular persons, please?
So moved?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good evening, everyone. Congratulations, Maria.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Thank you very much.